Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Nashua Public Library and the second of our series of candidate forums. I'm Carol Robidoux. I'm publisher of Nashua Inklink News. I want to just say a few words to start off. I want to thank the Nashua Public Library for hosting this and especially to Library Director Jen McCormick, who is the hero of this series of events. It was Jen who really was the spark plug that made all this happen, and she is unfortunately unable to be here tonight, but we're sending her our best wishes. I want to thank Nashua Public Television for being here, for recording, and also streaming live tonight. So if you're watching from home, thank you. I want to thank our readers at NashuaInklink.News. We've been around now for about a year and a half, and we're really excited to participate in civic life here in Nashua. And this is a very big, important part of it for us, is making sure that City Hall has coverage and that the public has a way of getting information and answers. Tonight, we're going to have a series of questions. We have our moderator for the evening is Rony Camille, and he is a proud Nashuan, and he also serves on the Nashua Cable Television Advisory Board. He's going to take over, and we're going to try to keep this moving and get you out of here at a decent hour. But we thank you all for coming. We have taken some questions from the audience, so if, as time allows, we will go through those questions as well. Thank you.
All right, Carol. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to another round of candidate forums, and we will hopefully have a lovely civil conversation. Just as a reminder, this is a forum, not a debate. And so we're going to go from, to my right, and we've got Ward 6, 8, and 9. It's a two-minute opportunity to introduce or reintroduce yourself to the community. Also, I'm curious about this. When you're not working or campaigning, what is one favorite thing you like to do in Nashua? Ms. Smith?
So I'm Vinder Falada-Smith, and I am running for alderman for Ward 6. Let's see, so many great things to do in Nashville, but one I do now, I spend a lot of time at the Nashville Center for the Arts, and I get the discount tickets, which are awesome. And I love to take my mom there, but because we're there, that's an excuse for a night out on the town for dinner. So any, popping into any of the restaurants on Main Street and having some food and maybe an adult beverage. And then there's a new coffee place called The Spot, and I highly recommend their beverages, too. But it's just great. So I love, you know, to find those nooks and crannies in Nashua and enjoy them.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Chris Thibodeau, current Ward 6 alderman. In my free time, I love playing in my garden. I like yard work. I like a couple of shops on Main Street. I just discovered the locker room was down there. I had frequented when they were in their other locations, so it's interesting to, you know, find those kind of places. And when I really want to just get out, I like going to Mines Falls Park when I can get down there. My dog loves it down there, so that's...
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I'm Dave McLaughlin, Ward 8, and a former alderman of that ward. In my off time, I enjoy weightlifting. I enjoy birdwatching. I have a small garden, and I also enjoy helping my neighbors with certain projects that they might come up with if they need an extra hand, lifting heavy things or moving things around, and also watching out for one another. And it's a nice community where I live, and the ward, I think, has been a great home, great people, and it's growing. And that's what's bringing me out again to try to offer myself, if the voters will have me, to be able to help the people connect with the city services that they're paying for. Thank you.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you, Rony. First of all, I just want to thank Inklink and the library for having us here tonight. And I know normally we'd have Ward 7 here as well, but because they don't have an opponent, they're not up here. But I just want to shout out to Ray Garino, who passed away last week. He was a former Board of Ed member, and I think I just wanted to mention his name. In my, in my spare time, things that I like to do that are fun, coaching and watching my kids play sports. I've been doing that now for over 15 years. If I'm not coaching them, I'm watching them. That brings me an incredible amount of joy, and it takes up an incredible amount of time, too, whatever they're doing, because most of them play multiple sports. So thank you very much.
Ms. Harriet Gayright.
Hi, I'm Linda Harriet Gathwright. I am currently Ward 9, state representative for 12 years, and former alderman for four years, and I am running to get that seat back. What I like in terms of good time, free time, my family. I have a large family, five kids, 12 grandchildren, and two big granddaughters, so we have a great time together in the parks and barbecuing.
Thank you. It is one important note that we should mention that John Sullivan, who is running for alderman in Ward 9, was also extended an invitation and had plans on being here this evening, but he is in transit. If he does show up, maybe he will be here, but if not, we'll be moving right along. So moving right along on the topic of social district. On the ballot this fall, voters will be asked, shall we allow the operation of social districts within the city of Nashua? And the definition of a social district is described as "an outdoor area in which a person may consume alcoholic beverages sold by a licensee." Basically means you could drink outside. If approved by voters in Nashua, the Board of Aldermen would then vote whether or not to allow social districts in the city and where they would be instated. What are your thoughts on social districts in Nashua? We'll start with Ms. Smith.
Okay, so, bad question for me as someone who works on college campuses, because I immediately want to say no to alcohol in the streets. But I think having a designated area is something that, it would have to be regulated. I'd have to know, like, where it is, how, what we contain it, and who's going to, you know, quote, police this. We'd be creating some additional work, I believe, for our city services, and I think this is something that we need to really give it more thought. I mean, it sounds like a great idea until you have to do the cleanup, or it sounds like a great idea until you have to deal with, you know, where individuals are going after they leave that social district, because it does require some maintenance.
Mr. Thibodeau.
I, for the item that's on the ballot, I am in favor of that moving forward to get to the next step, which is to, you know, have the alderman determine, you know, the details of it. But as far as the item that's on the ballot, I am in favor of a yes vote on that. The way it is explained to us in the Aldermanic Chamber was that it would be for things like the winter stroll, summer stroll, other special events such as that, and then they would be, like, in contained, like Beer Garden kind of thing. So, again, we're going to have to figure out the details, but as far as what's on the ballot, I am in favor of that.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I am inclined to oppose this concept. I just don't see it ending well in many cases. To the point made about the policing, I think our police are doing a fantastic job with the resources they have, and they're covering a lot of ground with all the problems we currently have. I see this as potentially straining their resources and presenting difficulties for their community policing, and so for that reason, I am opposed.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you. So when it came to the Aldermanic Chamber, I voted against it. And so even though this is just to put it on the ballot, and if the people of the city want it, it would come back to us to vote, I would probably still vote no against it. I don't think it's something we want to see in Nashua. You know, I don't think it would tax the police so much because it wouldn't happen that often. It would only happen with a few special events every year. But I still would want to get their input. I think it's important to ask the police what they think about it, and I just, it's just going to add, I think it's going to add more complexity of trouble than we already have, and I think we need to work on some other things first. But I understand why they want it, because it's trying to generate revenue, but I voted, I was one of the few aldermen to vote against it.
Ms. Harriet Gayright.
It was explained to me as well, and I would vote for that for, because I realized that it's only to allow the Board of Aldermen to take a look at it. And I have, I believe that if they're going to take a look at this, that they will also bring in a police department, a fire department, other people in that group setting to make that decision, and see what's necessary in order to make it happen and be safely happening. So, yes, I would vote for that.
Okay. We're moving right along to everyone's favorite topic, taxes, tax rate. So the tax rate is set by the State's Department of Revenue Administration and consists of four components: local municipal tax, county tax rate, local education tax, and the statewide education tax rate. Nashua's 2024 total tax rate is $15.90 per $1,000, which is below the average of larger New Hampshire cities. Still, some residents say that they find it difficult to afford this rate. What are your thoughts on the current tax rate? And if elected or reelected, how would you work towards a manageable tax rate while maintaining city services? Ms. Smith, we'll start with you.
I think one of the things that I would champion for us to do would be to look at how the funds are being utilized now. I mean, at one point, when we say, you know, there's a certain part for education, yet all I'm hearing is that our educational programs and our schools are underfunded. So I would be, you know, curious about that. The other thing I think we need to better inform our residents, especially our seniors and those on fixed incomes, about potential rebates they might be eligible for based on the fact that, you know, the tax rate keeps going up, but their incomes are not going up. And I know that's the same for many of us, but I think when individuals have worked and retired, that we do owe it to them to look at possibilities for not having their property taxes increase, continuing to increase. I think a reexamination as to why, and especially in Nashville, why is our tax rate at 16%? You know, what are we doing, you know, with the funds? I think there's, are some expenditures that we should look at, the possibility for getting funding from other sources that are not connected to the housing tax rate. We don't pay state taxes. We don't pay a sales tax, but I don't think it's fair to put the burden of taxes on those individuals who have property and fixed incomes. I think we need to reevaluate that.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Could you rephrase, or not rephrase, but...
What are your thoughts on the current tax rate, if elected or reelected, and how would you work towards a manageable tax rate while maintaining city services?
Well, unfortunately, I mean, the things that drive it is the budget, right? So, and the property values in the city. So with those two things, certain things are within our control and some are not, and the budget is within our control. So to get that tax rate down, we would need to reduce our budget and our spending habits.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. As I make my way around Ward 8, I meet taxpayer after taxpayer after taxpayer who is struggling, and they're in a bit of a state of shock with their recent round of their tax bills that went up fairly significantly. And Ward 8 used to be seen by the rest of the city as an affluent ward. And you talk to the people behind those doors when they open up, and they're telling you stories about having to make tough choices in their own personal budgets: medication, groceries, utilities, rents, and the property tax. And it's quite remarkable. It doesn't matter whether they're young or old, male or female, long-termers or short-termers. They're struggling, and I think that what we would want to do in the next term at City Hall, whether it's Derek or myself, is take a good, hard look at the rate of increase in spending that we have seen in this city and slow it down. And someone here on the first forum used the term "pump the brakes," and that's a pretty good term for how people feel, because when you have to administer your own personal budget and you're making these kind of choices in 2025, I think there's something wrong here. I think there's too much spending, and the taxes, unfortunately, are increasing, and at the moment, they're too high. Thank you.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you. I walk those same doors, and I don't, I have yet to hear people say those things in Ward 8. I would say to people, walk Ward 4, walk Ward 5, 6, 7, you're going to see people struggling in those wards. I get it, the tax rate's high. 15.9 is not a high tax rate. Go to Manchester, go to Concord, it's much higher. The tax rate itself, in the last 30 years, has not been close to 15.9. So it's not the tax rate, it's the assessments of the housing. That's what happened, is Nashua is a supreme place to live. The vacancy rate is 99%. People want to live here. After COVID, the residential and commercial businesses, commercial and residential, taxes switched. Commercial are not paying as much of the burden as they used to be, because it went away from it during COVID, right? We didn't, we could work from home. So what we really need to do, and, you know, I was the only one this year that cut any money off the budget. I cut $85,000. That's all we were able to find. Even the most conservative alderman couldn't take anything off the budget. And so it's important that we look at line items, which we do in the budget, I'm on the Budget Committee, but other, if we were to cut more stuff this year, we would have cut services for people, we would have cut jobs for people, especially education. That's our biggest area of the budget, and we didn't want to do that. And there was a lot of things that caused the budget to go up this year, including transportation, vouchers, which is now putting more of the burden on us, you know, paying for the education for public schools. So there's a lot of definitely other issues there, but I want to hear more people say how they're going to do it. What exactly are they going to cut? What? And I haven't, I've not heard that from any candidate so far in the last couple of months, I guess. Thank you.
Ms. Harriet Gayright.
Well, for me, the issue is at the state and at the county level. And when you find that we are reducing taxes in some groups of people, and then turning it around and giving it to the elderly, the low-income, et cetera, then that's a problem. So for me, I'm in the process to continue to fight for the downshifting of that here to Nashua, and not just Nashua, because I really am a statesperson across the state. So we have to do what we're supposed to do at the State House level and at the Senate level in order for our taxes to be less then. So if you all read the paper, you know how this is happening up there, and how many people are fighting for those issues, okay? Because you can't just take taxes away from a certain group of people that really don't need to take them away from them because they can afford it, but then you turn around and raise my taxes, okay, as a retired person. So there is a problem, and it starts with our state.
Would you all propose some sort of commercial tax, with the commercial sector, to kind of maybe start carrying that load? Ms. Smith?
You know, once again, I would want to have more information, but I think anytime we are able to sort of share the burden of the, of taxes, because all of us benefit from these city services, that's where the taxes go to. So I think if there's an opportunity for commercial businesses and things of this nature to pay their fair share of the tax so that it's equally distributed, and hopefully will allow us to lower the tax rate, I would be for that.
Mr. Thibodeau.
I guess I would need you to clarify that question.
Should commercial base also contribute to taxes in Nashua? Should it be a split tax, should it be a split tax rate besides the residential, commercial?
I mean, they already are contributing, right, through business, through property taxes.
Yes, at $15.90, so should they, should commercial be paying higher?
Yep. Yeah, I would definitely, I would contemplate that. I would need to have some more facts before making a decision like that, but I would definitely be open to listening to that.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I work for a company that's rather large. It's coast-to-coast. It has four locations here in New Hampshire, 13 in the Boston region, and these locations make millions of dollars in sales. So they're able to handle an adjustment in a commercial property tax if it were a reasonable one. The point I'm stressing here is that while they're making millions of dollars in volume, that money goes to a corporate headquarters. It's not in New Hampshire, and certainly not in Nashua. And so I think that there could be a role here to have that discussion with some of these larger companies. The mom-and-pop companies, which are commercial, I think should be exempt from that, because the local businesses, the local-based businesses, you know, they're struggling in the same atmosphere that I just described a moment ago in Ward 8. They're making decisions that, you know, can affect whether they can keep their doors open or not in this economy, and we want them to encourage, we want to encourage them to grow and expand as they can. But companies like the one that I work for, they're big, and they keep opening new locations. So they've got the money, and it might be worth having that discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Thibodeau.
No, I don't even think we could just make a new tax to do that. The way to put the burden more on commercial is to spur economic development in the city. And part of the things we're doing is planning and development. It has a new coding out, they're recoding the city for the zoning. And we live in a city that the code is so old that it's very restrictive, and this will open things up better, so we can look at Daniel Whipster Highway, we can look at Amherst Street, and we can actually do more there and do different things that maybe we can't do now. Multi-use, for instance, you know, businesses on the bottom, apartments on the top. Trying to bring in, you know, the tech bubble burst when COVID hit, we were going to bring in tech. Tech doesn't want to come here anymore, because they can work at home. We, maybe manufacturing. In Ward 7, we have Can One that just came in. They get 200 jobs over there. So maybe it's manufacturing that we bring back to Nashua. But we spur economic development. A lot of these new things in the code that will probably be, I think it's going to, looking for next July to have it done completely and voted on, you know, things like adding ADUs, parking limitations removed, inclusionary zoning, more in a way that developers want to come here and actually give affordable housing while also building here. We have to spur economic development so we can change that burden into more commercial like it was pre-COVID. And, you know, that's, you know, I'm on the Economic and Development Committee. That's what, you know, we strive for. I constantly tell Matt Sullivan, Planning Director, and Liz Han, Economic Development Director, that we need to bring unique companies here. Hasbro just went to Boston. Why couldn't that be here? The, what is it, New Balance went to Manchester-London area. Why couldn't that be here? So that's what we need to look at and try to fill some of these empty buildings that we're seeing. So thank you.
Ms. Harriet Gayright.
Yes, for me, I do believe that we should be looking at the commercial business. Not exactly sure how to make that work, but there is a difference in pricing that could be leveled based on the type of businesses it is, or whether it's one of those large mega businesses, or whether it's, as someone said, a mom-and-pop business, but I do believe that it's something that we should definitely be looking at in Nashua.
Thank you all for answering a question that many residents have and have proposed in, in recent months. Moving on right along, what do you view as the most pressing issue in your ward, and how would you address it if elected? We're going to go backwards. Ms. Harriet Gayright.
I would say, in my ward, right now, it would be the traffic. It's the traffic, it's the speeding, all of those things. We have, the street that I live on, I've been there over 40 years, used to be a street of children. About every 10 years, it changed, and it's teenagers, and then it goes back to children's, babies, and we have quite a few babies right now on the street. But in that area, not just my street, but that entire area over there in back of Northeastern Boulevard, is quite busy and quite fast-driving. So for me, that's my biggest thing. The other piece of that, I would say, is the housing. And we, in where I live as well, there's a lot of transition, you know, every couple years or so, transitioning out of that home, and another group moving in, just not quite sure what's happening there, that people don't seem to be able to stay in their homes. So I would take that back to being part of economics and what's happening across the United States, and that's it.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, thank you. So globally, it's always going to be taxes, but we touched on that. So when we look at it more of ward-specific, I mean, my ward's always worried that Flatley's going to overbuild and, you know, behind the Sheridan, and if that happens, that's where I get a lot of the questions and the complaints. But, you know, to what Ms. Harriet Gathwright said is speeding. Like, that's what I get most calls on, speeding, someone setting off fireworks. You know, we get the news, bad or good, in the papers or on TV, bad or good, about the bigger things. We talk about citywide, barriers, or taxes, or whatnot. But the most things I do day-to-day is get emails from constituents talking to me about speeding, maybe there should be a stop sign, there's a tree that looks like it's the city's tree, right? And people don't see that stuff, because it's not as sexy as, you know, the other stuff. So speeding is stuff we've worked on. I've put, you know, put in stop signs. We've tried to do police putting in boxes that people can't see and trying to see what the speeds are, trying to put in, we're going to put in, between Middle Dunstable and East Dunstable, there's a crosswalk over there, we're going to put in some flashing lights so that way it will slow people down. So those are the types of things that, that people care about day-to-day when they're calling me or they're writing me, is how can we make it safer in our ward? And so, I mean, that's what I pride myself on doing. That's what makes me feel good at the end of the day, if I can help them do some of these things. So that's kind of where I am from a ward perspective.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I do believe there is concern about the expanded neighborhood that's going in on the backside of Spindelwick Drive on the Flatley property. It is sort of the last pristine piece of what used to be a huge acreage of forest, and of course, the elimination of that to make room for homes, you know, that's part of the effect. And so there's a lot of people who are, you know, very concerned about what does that mean for traffic? What does that mean for the barrier of the natural areas that used to be there, and what happens to the wildlife that used to live there? But I go back to taxes. It's a big deal. The homeowners across the ward, whether up top or down low, the bigger homes or the smaller ones, they're all talking about the same thing, and that is the rate of spending in this city, and it is the rate of increase in their taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Thibodeau.
While door knocking and the volume of emails, much like Alderman Thibodeau mentioned, it's speeding. Speeding is the thing I get notifications about the most on the two primary roads, West Hollow Street, Kinsley Street, Lake Street. So, and been working with the police, trying to see what else we can do, you know, increase, you know, opposition so they can try and catch some of the people in the act. So, but that is the bulk of it, and then there's the taxes. There's, a lot of people are concerned about the, yeah, the rate of apartments that we're building. Yeah, I mean, those are the main issues that we get. It's, much like Alderman Thibodeau, they're not sexy things, they're, you know, stop signs, or yield signs, or hey, we want to crosswalk, that kind of stuff.
Ms. Smith.
I would say it's housing and definitely related to taxes. I spent a lot of time listening to individuals share their fear about being taxed out of a home that they thought that they owned, but now they feel that they don't own it because of the rate of taxes. And on the other side... And on the other side of that, I had a very lengthy conversation with an individual who actually owned, who rented property to individuals. And his concern was that he's wanting to be, you know, fair and to charge a, you know, good rent. But with the property taxes going on, he has no choice but to pass that on to the renters. And then the number of renters I talked with, once again, there's the concern about how rents have increased since 2022. You know, individuals' rents, you know, it's not like we're talking a hundred dollars a month. People's rents went up like by thousands of dollars. So they were being forced out of their homes or making decisions, you know, to think about moving. And I met with one individual, like they've lived in Nashua for forty something years. And now they are actually thinking about relocating to Florida because they can't afford to live here anymore. So the cost of housing and taxes that are being passed on to others.
In response to the Inquin questionnaire, Ms. Smith, you actually said you would plan to work collaboratively, collaboratively to identify housing projects that will focus on current and future needs. How do you plan on doing that?
Well, first, they've got to elect me, yay. And I'm part of these, the sort of getting in there and just trying to find out what has the Board of Aldermen been doing? You know, what, what things have come across the table, so to speak, that perhaps we did not consider? Because I think that we do have some opportunities to look at spaces that we have not thought about redeveloping, to look at some housing units that need restoration and to look at how do we turn these into either family homes or single, you know, parent places or whatever the housing stock is that we need because we don't have it. And I think we've got to have a collaborative effort where we're working with either our zoning offices and everyone, you know, so that we can identify land and spaces where potentially we could maybe build some new projects. But at the same time, I think there is an opportunity to look at things that are just standing and that are not being developed to see how we could turn them around and develop some safe, not just affordable, but income-based housing to solve some of these issues.
Can we take a break to set up a new microphone?
I can share one here, that's fine. We can share, yeah.
Share, that share is good. Sharing is caring.
We're good.
And we're going to stay with Ward Six. Mr. Tebow, how would you rate the city's efforts in bringing affordable housing to Nashua? What, if anything, could the city do differently?
I believe that the city's efforts are, you know, I think they're on par. I mean, we've been bringing in a lot of development. A lot of apartment buildings are opening up. You know, there's a certain portion of them that are, you know, set for a lower income of our families. I know we're doing a big development over, over by the old Boys and Girls Club in that area. And, and I know that one's going to be a larger majority, if I understand correctly, for lower income housing. So I believe that the city is, is, is working towards that. I believe it's a big issue. So, so it's probably taking a while before we can see those results. But I believe the city is, is, is on a path to try to help that situation.
All right, thank you. And just as a programming note, we want to welcome candidate John Sullivan from Ward Nine, who has joined the stage. We'll be getting to you and getting to know you momentarily. Mr. McLaughlin, when asked about your plan or strategy for addressing homelessness, you said that supporting fiscally responsible city budget would be a positive first step. How would you ensure a budget is fiscally responsible while ensuring adequate resources are allocated to help those people housed?
Thank you. Up until 2017, the Board of Aldermen used to work within the confines of a spending cap when considering the passage of the annual budget. That year, something changed. And the administration and the then Board of Aldermen and subsequent boards since have found a way to reconfigure the, the spending when it comes to putting the budget together. Certain spending allotments were taken out of the original formula and set aside so that a more limited amount of the taxes were used to figure out how to advance the budget. So number one, I think we should get back to the intent of the original spending cap because it's a useful tool in helping the Board of Aldermen, regardless of its composition, stay within a certain and reasonable amount of increase in spending. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I think that the city could do a little more to work with the federal delegation. The congressmen and the senators go down to Washington and work through the HUD programs that are already there and federally funded. There are voucher programs that can be applied for and qualified for. And I don't think that information makes it to the average person in the neighborhood or on the street because they're just too busy trying to get by by paying their taxes. Or if you're unhoused, you don't have any information. You don't know where to get it. You don't know where to turn. So I think that we could call upon our U.S. representatives and our U.S. senators to help the city in making awareness of these voucher programs. And I think that would have a positive impact, at least in some way, on the homeless.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. You are out of time. Just a reminder, candidates, you have two minutes per response here. Moving on to Mr. Tebow. When asked about your plan or strategy for addressing homelessness, you said that we need to find more ways, ways, excuse me, my apologies, ways to get more mental health care and rehab services for the people that need and want it. How can the Board of Aldermen help connect people with the resources that they need?
Well, we can continue definitely to work with Bobby Bagley, who's our CHO of the city. And they have people go down to the unsheltered and they track them. One thing that was originally cut out of the budget this year was community health workers. And Alderman, Alderman Kelly made sure to put an amendment on, or, yeah, an amendment onto the budget to add them back in. And I made sure to take that money out of legal services so we could afford to have them. So it's important that we have enough health workers in our city to be able to respond to the people that need it. And if the crisis continues to grow, we need to continue to, to, to build on that. And I think they do a good job, but I think it's getting to a point now where it may be too much to handle for what we have. And so we've got to continue to support them when they need it. We've got to support them in, in ways of getting that, you know, we got a warming station coming December first. This was in a much better place than we were the last couple of years, getting it done earlier and setting it earlier. But the one thing we could have used is, we could have used maybe November because I think November can get cold too, especially towards the end. So I think, you know, that's another thing that we should look at. But, you know, when you do this stuff, it costs money. And if everybody's saying, get rid of money, get rid of money, get rid of money, where are you going to find it to do that? So it's not cheap to continue to run a warming station. And so that's why we've had so many struggles with it the last couple of years. But mental health is the first step to helping a lot of the people that need it. We just have to have enough people to be able to support that.
Thank you. Ms. Harriet Gayright, when asked what ideas you have to improve the availability of affordable housing in the city, you said that companies that want to build in Nashua be censored and that they can't continue to build on affordable housing. What do you mean by censoring? And how can the city encourage or incentivize developers to build affordable housing?
So one of the things right now, I think, well, I do know in the city is that the homes that are being built, or their apartment buildings that are being built, they do have a section for low income or, you know, based on your income. That, I don't remember exactly how many home, how many apartments are set aside, but there are apartments that are set aside for what's considered standard apartment rental as well as low income rental. So with that said, I do believe that that's the best way to go. And when I say censor them, censor them in the form that everyone that comes here to build an apartment or to build homes, make sure that there's that setting that even those that are considered low income can still make that purchase. So that's the essence of it.
Thank you. And Mr. Sullivan, I must ask, do you want to answer the questions that we asked the other candidates out of fairness earlier or?
No, absolutely not. It was, I mean, you are looking at the embodiment of, of the government shutdown right now. So, so I don't want to put people through.
I actually would like for you, if at all possible, if you could introduce yourself to the Nashville community. And also tell us, what is the one thing that you love doing while you are not working or campaigning here in our city?
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you. Apologies for being late. John Sullivan, current Ward Nine Alderman. Been in Ward Nine since ninety-seven. I'm running because, I don't know if you asked that question, but I'm running because I really enjoy the job. I love talking with the folks of the ward and helping them out where I can. And as far as what I love to do inside of the ward, when either I'm not working or, or running for office, is using Mind Falls Park and taking my dogs out for a walk. That really is, it's a gem in our city. And I love going out there and, you know, you can get lost for, for, you know, a couple of hours just going through all the trails. So I really love it. Thank you.
Very good. I have another question for you.
Okay.
Because all of them answered their respective question. When asked about your plan and strategy for addressing homelessness, you said that Nashua needs help from our state and private companies. What should the state and private companies be doing to help the city address homelessness?
So I've been keeping a close eye on what Manchester is doing. And they extended the, I believe it was the Beach Street Shelter over there. And, and the mayor up there had, had put together a consortium, if you will, of the local hospitals and some local businesses to help them figure out, you know, the total cost. And I think that we should share, everybody shares the burden of what homelessness is doing in our city. I think that they also need to, or I should say they're experiencing what's going on. They should also share the burden. I think that it would behoove the city of Nashua to regularly sit with folks up at the state at the higher levels of the government so they can clearly understand what it is we're faced with here in Nashua. Because what happens is when you look at our state, it's very varied. And what's happening north of Concord, maybe people don't understand what's going on south of Manchester. And I think it's really important to stay present and stay focused with them to say, this is how you can help us. Please help us. Because it's such a big issue. It needs to go above Nashua's level and to really help us out. Thanks.
Thank you. What can members, and this is an audience submitted question, what can members of city boards do to bring civility to board meetings? We're going to start, Ms. Smith.
That's an interesting question. I've been to a couple of board meetings and I, I thought they were civil. But I think one of the things, if we have to, if we start off with, you know, sort of a code of conduct, if individuals need to be reminded of where they are and to make sure that we're able to engage in dialogue and to agree to disagree. You know, if I'm in a disagreement with someone or we have differences of opinion, you know, learning happens there. Sometimes, you know, I could ask a question, you know, so Chris and I, I'm running against him. I intend to win, but I'm running against him.
All right, no.
But we're going to engage in, you know, in dialogue. You know, we both want the same things for our community. We just might want to do it differently. But, you know, talking and sharing and having communication, sometimes there might be something I didn't think about in a particular way. So this can be heard. Let's be respectful so that we can hear what you have to say and say it in a way where we can hear it. And then let's try to move forward positively for our communities because we are there to represent the residents of Nashua. So we should behave. Do I need to say that again? We are there to represent the residents of Nashua. So we should behave with the dignity and respect that our residents have.
Aye.
Do I have more time? Because my mom can come out right here now, just saying. You know, because it bothers me and I, and I get what you're saying. You know, civility, unfortunately, in our society, there are some individuals that would make us think or lead us to believe that the only way we can act is to interact and to not be intelligent and to do name-calling or things of that nature. Well, that's not going to benefit anyone. What we want to do is to do our job, get things done and represent our community.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Tebow.
So in, in coming up on two years, for the very bulk majority, I mean, there is civility in that room. There are times when people come in because they have, you know, things that are important to them. Or even, we've had a few moments in the chamber with, you know, members in the horseshoe. Passions can get elevated. But, yeah, civility is paramount. I mean, you know, you know, your listening ears need to be, to be able to hear, as Vijay Flutus said, differing opinions. You know, your way is not always the right way. And, and we should, we should keep that in mind. And, and that goes for the citizens that come to the chamber, that comes to all the Board of Aldermen, that comes from, you know, everyone in that chamber.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. My approach to that is we can all agree to disagree agreeably. And during my six years as the Alderman of Ward Eight and on the various boards and commissions that I've had the privilege of serving, I've always kept in mind what you have just described. Everyone is entitled to their own viewpoint and their own opinion. And, you know, you do learn things in those exchanges. I think what happens is sometimes the passion of the moment. Some, some do get caught up in those situations and they may not even realize how aggressive they're coming across. But I think that anyone, especially those who take time out of their evenings after having worked all day, potentially, to go to a city hall meeting, whether it's a subcommittee or the full board, they're putting out extra effort because they're tired. They'd probably rather go home and relax, but they've got something to say. And perhaps the boards or the committees could learn from it. And so to close down discussion or dismiss an opinion or a suggestion, I think, in a city of this size, is not helpful. And I have a reputation of having been a moderate voice on the board and a civil one. And if I'm elected on November fourth, I'll bring that to City Hall. Thank you.
Mr. Tebow.
Yeah, I, I think they're all talking about me. I get passionate. I'm a hundred percent the questions about me. You know, I get passionate. These issues, especially when we're speaking to each other on the horseshoe, and, you know, the current Alderman up here will, will tell you. I get passionate about some of these issues and I respect all of them, all, all, all of us, all fifteen. And so, or fourteen. I don't want, I don't respect myself. But all, all the rest of them I do. And I think that, you know, it's, sometimes you get an issue that, that is, is, is really hot and it's, and it can get that way. And I hope most of the time that I've gone to them at, at points and at least afterwards said, you know, I didn't mean this or I didn't mean that. Sorry about this. I should have handled it a different way. When it comes to, to citizens, I love having them come up and speak. Some like to antagonize. And so I have, I got to learn to, you know, not embrace and engage in that kind of antagonizing and just let it go over my head, you know. And, and when they have good ideas and suggestions or just want to vent, I love it. But when they're, they're trying to attack anybody, any one of us, I don't like when they attack. Because I think that's not the proper way to do things. It's going to, you know, you catch more, what is it, what's it saying, honey with flies or flies with honey? Flies with honey. So it's, I, you know, but when, I like when people say good things and, or, or even things that are wrong. And maybe we can, can come to something where we can fix it. So, you know, as a human being and a passionate human being, I'm still trying. I'm still learning. And, but it's, it's not because I hate anybody up there or I disrespect anyone. I really do respect them all, whether they agree with me or I agree with them. Thank you.
Ms. Harriet Gayright.
I believe that everyone should be heard. There's not a person that would come in the chamber or even up at the State House that everyone should, needs to be heard and listened to. However, I do not like when people are screaming and yelling or calling people names. I think it's very rude, disrespectful. So I would like to see a chamber So, I would like to see a chamber, this chamber, a more peaceful chamber, one that we could be proud of, and the folks that come in there to voice their opinion, that they respect just the chamber, the fact that you're in a chamber, and that chamber belongs to the citizens of Nashua, and you should come there with respect.
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. I think it's a good question. And I think in our society overall, I didn't think, when I first ran for office, that the politics that happens in DC would trickle down into Nashua, New Hampshire. But it has. And I think, I look at it, and I learned this early on, when I was managing a sales team, a mentor of mine said, and reminded me, that when you're a leader, you are on stage. Metaphorically, we are on stage right now, and you're all watching us, either here in the audience or at home. And how we act affects you out in Nashua. I pride myself in trying to stay measured. And no matter what happens, if people call me out by name, or how I vote, I try very hard to stay above it. I don't get emotional about politics. I don't. At the end of the day, everybody up on this stage, and everybody in the audience, we all live about 10 to 15 minutes away from each other. We're all neighbors. We all want the same thing in this city. And we have to remember that all Nashuans look to their leaders first, when it comes to how they act, and more importantly, react to everything that's going on. I'm going to work hard to maintain that focus, and to maintain that stoic attitude as I go forward, should I be re-elected. Thank you.
I'm gonna stay on you because you came, you know, you had some delays, that's all right. What are your thoughts on the current tax rate? And if elected, how would you work towards a manageable tax rate while maintaining city services?
Well, I was listening in the car, thank you for the question, I was listening in the car on the app. If no one has the app yet for the public TV, you need to download it tonight, it's really good, I listened to it on the way. And thank you for asking. And what I did want to say was, I heard this question in the first forum. And I'm not crazy about the question, because it's hard to compare Nashua with other cities, regardless of population. Because they may not have as many houses, they may not be assessed as often as ours are, they may not have as many police officers, schoolteachers, buses, there are a lot of things and a lot of factors that go into that tax rate. So I think what's really important to remember is, and now, these are my taxes, and I looked it up while I was watching that other forum. Since the year 2012, my taxes have gone up 58.9%.
Wow.
So that's 12, that's 13 years. So, for me, I understand that everybody wants to look at the $15.90 tax rate. I think what you have to look at is, what are you writing for a check year over year? And as far as how we do that, three points. Grow the economic base, obsess over costs and spending, and be very, very strategic in how we allocate capital in this city. That's how you do it.
We had a resident submitted question, how can Nashua, and it was to you, how can Nashua diversify the tax base? And you mentioned that, so.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just came from Detroit. And everybody's probably heard about Detroit, and where it was, and, I mean, it wasn't disrepair. I was, I used to travel out there quite a bit 10, 15 years ago. And Detroit was not in good shape. I have to tell you, I was in downtown Detroit, it's amazing. And what is growing? I was out there for a battery trade show. Detroit is investing in new technologies. Now, we all may say, well, the electric car, the electric car, this, that, the other thing. Well, GM, Ford, and a lot of the manufacturers out in Detroit are looking at this new technology. And I thought to myself, why not Nashua? Why not? And if it's not battery tech, technology, is it education? Is it small, light manufacturing? There's a lot of different economic segments that we can look at, that I think that we should and could take advantage of. The other thing is that there are, literally, at the trade show that I was at, there were four different states that had booths at the trade show, trying to attract businesses to their state. Texas, New York, Missouri, and California. There wasn't New Hampshire there. But there are states that send their economic development people out in front of these businesses, and say, look at what we have to offer. We have a great education base, our population, the housing is growing, we're investing in our city. And they sell their city to businesses. I think we should do that.
Yes.
We should go out there and say, hey, have you heard about Nashua? Probably a lot of them haven't. And we should go out there and ask them to come to Nashua.
Thank you. This is a resident submitted question. We hear from candidates that the city budget is too high. Is it? And if you think it is, what, where would you cut it? Ms. Smith.
Well, I'd have to admit that I have not completely reviewed the city budget. But I think, like anyone else, if you go to look at a budget, to me, I would look at, what are the essentials? There are certain services that we must have for our communities. And those things need to, you know, we just have to have those, so those things can't be cut. I think we need to look at, what are some of the things that our funds are allocated that could be either put on hold, or may not be necessary? And usually, that's not in the budget, but those are the things that no one wants to talk about. You know, there's something in there that we could look at, where we could make some changes, or come up with a different plan, so that we can maintain our essentials. Because we cannot cut our police, our firefighters, our education. We cannot, you know, stop doing the work we need to do on the infrastructure. We're an aging population, we're an aging city. So we need to make sure that our roads and things are continued to be built and upgraded. Likewise, with technology. There are certain things that we need to have in our schools, in our homes, so that we are still, you know, able to function, and that we are an attractive community for those individuals that we need to come here and work. We can't lose our medical staff. We need, you know, we need engineers, we need these individuals to come in and want to live here. So, we need to look at what we're doing in the budget. You know, where is the fat? There's always a little fat someplace. But make sure we maintain the essentials. And then also, look at what we, what are we doing that is going to attract individuals to come here, as well as the businesses? Because I think there is a lot of, I think there's some potential waste, because there's a lot of land around, that we just need to see how we can get it developed.
Mr. Tibor.
Well, a few things. So, this job is, you know, it's a challenging job. And you have to be willing to make tough choices. And it's not maybe the popular opinion, and I wouldn't like to do it. But if needed, if reduction in staff in certain departments, I don't have a department in mind, but if that was, was a thing that could be cut, then unfortunately, to run the city for the, for the safety of the taxpayers and their dollars, unfortunately, that might have to happen. So, to take that off the table, I think is irresponsible. Not a thing that I would want to do, but willing to do it. And then second thing is, is things that matter most should never be put at the mercy of things that matter the least. So we just need to prioritize our spending.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I haven't used the word "cut" in any of my comments or responses. And I don't use the word "cut" when I'm out on the, on the streets of Ward Eight, knocking on doors. What I'm saying is, slow it down. Slow the rate of increase in spending down. Let's get back to the constraints of the spending cap. It can only help make these hard decisions more clear. And I think if the taxpayers felt that the Board of Aldermen, in considering the budget, were adhering to the constraints of a spending cap, if it's not that cap, the original one, then some slight variation of it perhaps, but they have the impression that the government is growing at an unsustainable rate, which is reflected on their own personal budgets at tax time. Thank you.
Mr. Tibor.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, this is the question I ask people when they say, why don't you cut the budget? It's too high. I always turn back to them, what should we cut then? Paving? Snow plowing? Police? Fire? Like, this year's budget didn't have any crazy pet project that, you know, Performing Arts Center came before my time. So something like that, we don't have anything like that. We're trying to build, you know, fix garages that former boards let go. We're at their end of life. And so, we cannot have a garage fall upon people. We can't. Or cars, or, you know, we can't. So, you know, some of these things need fixing. I mean, Cellos, we waited too long, and then we had to fix it over the cap. We had to appropriate more money towards it, it was the only way. We couldn't go under the cap on that, when we were, the budget was already done. So, I always look at that and say, what can we cut? And things have come up, like, do we cut a school? Do we cut people? I don't want to do any of that. And, you know, if this continues to go this way, that might be the direction of where we have to go. I don't want to do that. That's really going to be a BOE to decide that. But, you know, sometimes we get, you know, Alderman Sullivan tries to cut $2 million in education. The problem with that is, we don't have line item on that. So we can't say, hey, Superintendent Andre, cut this out of the education budget. He can do whatever he wants with it. Maybe he cuts five teachers, I don't know, 10 teachers. So, I don't feel comfortable about that, because of that. But as far as, this year, I thought it was a very, very tight budget. And it takes a lot to run a city, to keep the infrastructure up, to keep the benefits and health benefits that continue to increase out of control. And that's something, we can't control the health benefits. So, I thought it was a tight budget this year, I really did, and we just got to continue to try to keep it that way. Thank you.
Ms. Harriet Gaitt.
Even though I was not involved with the budget this year, but I thought it was quite tight as well. And I do agree with our Alderman here that talks about the schools, and the teachers, and the policemen, and, and all the needs that they have in terms of their pay, in terms of, in terms of their insurance, et cetera. That's a lot. It's an awful lot. But we have to just take care of them. Because they are those that help us to survive in this city. So we have to take care of the Health Department, we have to take care of the city as a whole. And there's no chance of cutting schools the way that I've heard that some have been offered. So what I propose is that we continue with the way that we're doing things in Nashua, in terms of union contracts, and in terms of Health Department, in terms of the school, that money that the, that the judge says is due every child in Nashua, I think we need to get it. And if that means that everybody has to go and yell and scream, not yell and scream. Be nice about it, but at least talk about receiving the money that's due here in Nashua, not just from the school, the Education Department, but also from the state, and from the county. So that's what I think that we need to do, to bring money in, like now. And yes, I do believe that, you know, as time goes on, economics and bringing in businesses and things of that nature will help. But we have avenues to get money now, and we need to focus that, and talk about that, and witness to that.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. I've been on the Budget Committee every year I've been in office, so four years. I've sat through every budget. I voted against three out of the four. I don't wear that as a badge of honor. Every time that I have a budget in front of me, I go through it with a fine-tooth comb. And I think about the average Nashuan that has to write the check. So, not to sound like a broken record, but I will. I think that we have to grow revenue, we have to obsess over costs in the city, like any business owner. A good leader obsesses over costs, and they allocate capital appropriately to make sure that the business is running the way it should. Now, the other piece of it is, when we sat down, we were very direct, and we said, we want a 4% budget lift. Those were the orders that the Budget Committee asked for the administration to come back with. What happened was, they came back with a 4% lift, however, they took salaries and benefits and set it off to the side. Now, I've been involved with a lot of different corporate budgets and a lot of businesses. None of them, when it comes to an operating budget for a business, takes salaries and benefits and sets them over here, and then grows the rest of the budget that way. We must be transparent with people. If we say that that was a 4% lift, then how is it that after we put $6 million towards the tax rate, when I advocated to put nine, how is it that we still have a 6% budget lift, when what you hear is, it was only 4%? You'd probably walk around Nashua thinking, I must be crazy. So we have to be transparent in our budget processing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. And just to clarify, when you mean by 4% lift, you mean a reduction for people at home that may not be municipally inclined?
Sorry, I should clarify. 4% over last year's budget. We were, we said we want a 4% lift over last year's general fund budget, and it ended up being, it's a 6% tax lift over the previous year. And that's after we put $6 million towards it.
Okay. Sticking with you because of travel, what do you view as your most pressing issue in your ward, and how would you address it if elected?
Well, I think there's, you know, we've touched on taxes over and over again, and that is the number one issue that I hear. I hear about infrastructure, I hear about sidewalks, the shape of sidewalks. And it's the bigger picture. A lot of the Ward Niners that I talk to say, we spend a lot of time and attention on downtown. And not, and a lot of that money doesn't seem to seep out into other wards. So we'd like to see some more, again, allocating capital towards other parts of the city to make sure that everybody is seeing the results of the taxes that they pay. I think that downtown is very important. But if I could use a workout analogy, you can't just work on your legs all the time, because your arms are going to be weak. I think you have to work on the whole body. And I think that that's what we need to do. We need to be smart about it, and make sure that we're working on the entire city, and making sure that we're paying attention to the needs of every single ward, not just downtown.
All right, thank you. We're going to go back to resident submitted questions. Some other cities in the US are having success having mental health aid workers work with police on some calls. Does Nashua do enough to make sure mental health issues, services are available? Ms. Smith?
Based on some of the conversations and information that I've gotten from our Health Director, Ms. Bagley, I would say, they do what they can based on the resources that we have. As part of some sort of crisis intervention team, I believe having a police officer and a certified counselor, or someone who's, you know, there to respond to certain situations is only going to be helpful and benefit the communities. Because mental health, I mean, if there's anyone that doesn't believe that mental health is one of the new crises, not necessarily in Nashua, but for our country, trust me, that is a number one issue. And if you don't think that there are mental health issues, you know, tell individuals, so think about this. Just a couple of years ago, everybody went home, bought toilet paper, and waited to die. We are not well. We are not well. We stocked up on sardines, you don't eat sardines. You bought canned peaches. You know, so, but because of that, and I hate to bring a lie to it, but I really want you to think about what we went through. And think about your own state of mental health. But then think about those individuals who already had challenges. Look at what our students went through, just trying to do school at home. Look at what their parents went through, trying to help them do school at home. So, mental health is something we need to start thinking of it, like we think about our overall health and wellness. If someone gets a cold, we try to get them to see this, we get over counter drugs, we try to take care of them. Somehow, with mental health, we think it's just going to go away. Somehow, mental health, we think it's just going to go away. Eat some ice cream, you'll feel better tomorrow. Think happy, you won't be depressed. That's not it. Mental health is an extreme challenge, and we're now seeing some of that. When I think about the individuals who are in the homeless, when I had conversations with individuals, I said, part of that homeless committee, it's not just individuals who are homeless. We've got people with mental health disorders and health disorders that are out there who need help.
Thank you. Mr. Tebow.
Once again, here, Pete.
Yes. Does Nashua do enough to make sure mental health services are available with the, it just looks like, during police calls, but with the Police Department?
I'm going to give a shorter answer, just because I agree, I agree that we've got a huge, we've got a huge mental health concern in the country, in the state, in the city. From what I remember hearing is, we do have some resources that can be dispatched either with police, or I'm not sure if they get dispatched prior to, but we do have some of those resources. Could it be more? Possibly. I haven't heard all the details on how effective that is, how effective that project is going so far. But I do know that we do provide some. Could we do more? I guess you could always say we could do more. I mean, I suppose that's the, always the easy answer is that we could always do more.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Up until this question, I must admit, I was not aware that that is an effort being undertaken. But I think it's a pretty ingenious one and worthy of support. Because the mental health worker may be in an environment where, you know, it could be a domestic thing with some considerable potential of violence. And to have someone from the Nashua Police Force alongside would be a great deterrent and an insurance policy that everyone could be as safe as possible in those moments. Thank you.
Mr. Tebow.
Yeah, no. I mean, you can never do enough, right? I mean, we could always use more help. I mean, when we did the budget this year, I was pushing, and some of us were pushing for 3.5%, not 4. And one of the things that got cut was community health workers. And I know they may not be the ones that directly helped the police, or they might have been, I don't know. But we cut staff, like that take care of mental health for people. So, you know, if you're going to limit the budget and push it even further down, you're going to lose services that help people. And I know that when they did this pilot program, it worked great, and it was a, it helped the police. And I know the police were going through a lot more mental health training, because that's really, you know, some of these situations, they need that. And I think the Bobby Bagley, Director Bagley's, people that they have on staff have been great to come to these events when they happen and help police through it. So, could we use more? We could absolutely use more people. And so, but it's, again, you got to look at the budget.
Ms. Harriet Gaitt.
Yes. That is the process now with the Health Department and the Police Department, and they do call and ask for assistance. And that started roughly about four or five years ago. So, the problem is, we don't have the money, so we don't have more people. And speaking to that, hats off to the churches, hats off to the Health Department, hats off to the nonprofits, to all that, you know. What I think about Nashua is just, we have a great conglomerate of folks that are trying to help solve those issues around mental health, around drug addiction, et cetera. And I'm just going to say, we don't have the money. And if we can get the money, then we can hire more people to help in those situations, even in the hospitals. It's the same way. It's like, shorten this here, nurses, doctors, all that in Nashua.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. The short answer is, you can always do more, and I think we have to do more. I've come around on this issue, and when it comes to the police, I did a ride along a couple of weeks ago, and it wasn't on the subject, but it was on the heels of the tragedy that happened at Sky Meadow. That young man was not right. And you put a gun in his hand, and that's what happens. And you look at our society, my oldest son is now a mental health counselor, and he only works with male patients. Anxiety, depression, anxiety, depression, anxiety, depression. Young men in our society. We must do more. We have to do more. Again, it goes back to the homeless question. I think they're related. They're obviously related. We have to go to levels above just Nashua because it is such a large issue. And I know everyone is dealing with it. We have to make this a priority. But we also have to make it a priority inside of our homes as well. You know, a strong family helps that mental health issue. It's everything that's connected. And I know that during the budget season, I went through even our school system, and I know that there were openings for school psychologists that hadn't gone, that weren't filled at the time. I hope that they're filled now, because obviously, that's where they need help as well. But going back to the police, I mean, the job of a cop today is changing. It's not just pulling somebody over for speeding. It's, it could be a whole different bag that they were dealing with even 10 years ago. So, I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. We're going to stay with you because you're catching up. What are your thoughts on social districts in the city of Nashua?
I changed my mind on it. I voted to put it on the ballot. That's my, that's kind of my natural reflex, is to let the people decide and put it out there for the folks to up or thumbs down about it. John Sullivan, the voter in Nashua, is going to vote against it. After, again, going back to the ride along, I had a long conversation with Deputy Chief Kenny about it, and he told me that the hands of Nashua Police are full, and I certainly don't want to add to that. So I explained my position. I was for it because I went out to Tuscan Village in Salem, and I said, we need this. This is great. What great energy, what, how fantastic this is. Nashua is not Salem, Salem is not Nashua. So I changed my mind on it. I wanted to put it on the ballot to let Nashuans decide, but me, myself, I'm going to vote against it. I don't want to, I don't want to burden our police.
Thank you. Another resident submitted question, audience. How can the city spur economic development? Ms. Smith.
Very good question, audience. I think what the city needs to do, and you've heard some individuals say this, is that we need to start thinking about our city like it's also a business. And we need to attract businesses here that are going to create jobs, that also will bring in income. Because right now, we're limited. So, I think Sullivan did a great job of talking about some of the new businesses that are going to some of our nearby neighbors in New England. But I think we need to look at sort of not selling our city, because I don't want to sell Nashua, I like it. But I would like for businesses to come here. Because with that adding to our economy and creating more jobs, it provides other opportunities. So we need to sort of look at, you know, what industries are out there that could be here, that would be healthy, that would add to our communities. We don't want anything that's going to come in and damage our environment. So I don't want something that's, you know, like that. But to look at some businesses that potentially would come here and would benefit our community and our residents, I think that's something that we should consider.
Mr. Tebow.
Again, I'm going to ask you to repeat that. I just get caught up in your answers. I do, I do like you. But if you could.
I like Ward 6. Ward 6 is nice. How can the city spur economic development?
How can it? I guess to be more inviting to the businesses that are out there. I think a couple of the other people up here had mentioned, you know, we need to be more active in seeking those opportunities as well. If they don't know Nashua exists, you know, how are they, how are they going to find us? I don't have a more better answer than that. I just think, we just need to be more open-minded to those opportunities that are out there. And, you know, how did, how did New Balance move into where they were? Did they go looking for New Balance? Did they know that New Balance? I don't want to, not a commercial for New Balance. But, but did they hunt out the town, or did the town hunt out that opportunity? So, so those kinds of things. I would like to know some more of those types of answers. That's all I have.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Well, we have an Economic Development Office, so we have an Economic Development Director, and I'm sure that there is ample funds funding their salaries, and I'm sure they have some resources at their disposal to promote the benefits of doing business here in Nashua as part of their responsibilities. And I liked Alderman Sullivan's comment that, at this particular show, New Hampshire wasn't there, Texas was, New York was, and so forth. But I think we could use our Economic Development Director as an ambassador for the city of Nashua. And if and when the opportunity arises and is known for shows similar to the one described by Alderman Sullivan, that we could find a way to send the Economic Development Director to that. And I'm sure he's pretty good at selling the benefit of doing business here in Nashua. Or she might. Thank you, sir. But also, we could also have some of our more prominent businessmen who are already here and well-established serve as ambassadors for economic development. Some of the bigger, well-known, longer-established business owners, they travel, and they're out and about across New England and the country, and I'm sure that they're visiting trade shows for their own products and services. And they could be empowered, if you will, to help sell the benefit of doing business here. And that's my thought on that. Thank you.
Mr. Tebow.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think if we think up here that our Economic Development Director, Liz Hanam, is not doing those type of things, then that's a myth. She is definitely trying to do those things. Companies have to want to come here. You can talk to them all day long. If they don't want to come here, they don't want to come here. London Area bids us for, they all bid us. And so, a couple of things, right? Chicken or the egg? We don't have any vacancies here right now. I knew a while back, VAE couldn't hire people because they couldn't find people that could live here, right? So they didn't know where to live. So how are you going to, how are you going to, you know, bring in all these people? So companies look at that when they look at a city. And if we think we have money in the budget to send Liz Hanam to Detroit or Chicago, she would love that, probably. But I'll tell you, that's not in the budget. And we just, when she came to us with a budget this year, she had to cut back on the branding of the city. She's been pushing and pushing to promote this city, and we've cut and cut that budget. Because, again, is that essential to the other things that are needed in the city? We're going to push back paving so we can get branding out there? No, of course not. So those are the types of things that get cut. So we need to do what we've been trying to do, is re-code, re-zone the city, re-code it. And they've been working on this all year. We've had meetings, I think they've been here, they've been at City Hall, for the public to come out, look at it, give their input. And I was talking about it earlier, more mixed-use places, different types of businesses in different types of places, more affordable housing to get people in here, get developers to want to do affordable housing, and if they can't do it, they pay into the Housing Trust Fund. That's the way we spur this stuff. And we got to start with the code. The code's the first start. And we do have to promote Nashua somehow, but it's got to cost very little because that type of budget doesn't get funded. It just doesn't. Thank you.
Ms. Harriet Gaitt.
I would agree with my representative here from the Board of Aldermen. I think that, or I should say, I know that even if the businesses come here, the people can't afford to live in Nashua, that's been a big issue. So, how do you get the companies here and the people have no place to live? So, it's a difficult one. I do believe it's solvable in some fashion or another. I believe that as a Board of Aldermen going in the future, that I would be willing to work to help that situation with our housing, and then help also to get more money into Nashua that belongs here, that's in the state. So.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you. I was chatting with my boss's son over the week, and he's 27, and he just got a new job there from Detroit as well. And he just moved down to Marietta, Georgia, and started working for a company called ViscoTech. This is very boring, I know, but it's dispensing. And he's a sales engineer. And as a 27-year-old, fresh out of college, picked up, moved down to Marietta, Georgia on his own, found an apartment. I was talking with him, just chatting with him, because everything ties back to Nashua, and I'm just interested in stories and what's going on out there. I'm not sure if Marietta is any closer to Nashua as far as affordability, but I do know that they're building like crazy. And I, I think that when we look at it, you know, I would love to, you know, would it be great to have another BAE here, another digital, another Sanders, you know, back in the day? Mikel Wayne Shoe for manufacturing. I think the focus might be on small and medium-sized businesses, locally-owned and operated businesses, because that money stays here. We see Nashuans, we see local people do well, they grow their business, they stay here, they start a family here, and that's what we want. I would love to see kind of a reinvigoration of entrepreneurship here in Nashua, and let's make that possible. And that's how we grow our local economic base, I think. Focus on that.
Thank you. And I'm going to let each one of you give a one, up to, up to one-minute closing statement. Mrs. Sullivan, and we're going to go back this way.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, apologies for being late tonight. I am going to stay after. If there's anybody here that wants to come up and ask me a question that maybe I missed when I was speeding up here from Boston, so I'd be happy to stay long if you want to chat about it. I'm happy to be running again for another two-year term for Ward 9 Aldermen. You know, I think in life, as you go along, you know, you have your vocation, how you order, you know, how you get your paycheck and different things. And then, as you go on in life, you find your calling and maybe your vocation. And to me, being a Ward Alderman is that vocation. It's something that I have, it's a lot of long meetings, it's a lot of very small details about a pothole or a sidewalk or something like that, but I love, I love, I love it. And I'm hoping that I can continue on in the job for another two years. So, thank you very much for having us, and this was a great forum. Thank you, everybody.
Ms. Harriet Gaitt.
As I stated before, I've worked for over 45 years in the Nashua community, as well as other cities and towns within the state. Always looking for an opportunity to increase education-wise knowledge. My service at the state level serves in the connection, relationship between the city and the state. Fostering how to blend the two together for the well-being of the city as well as the state. I believe as an Alderman, I am in the service to the city, working on behalf of the citizens of Nashua. I believe as an Alderman, you should not be about yourself and self-interest versus constituents' interests. I am seeking this position to represent my constituents, as I have done in the past, while serving on the Board of Aldermen with a passion to exploring means to not increase property tax. I signed off on our Nashua Center for the Arts, updating of the Harris Road Park. Prior President's family and Board of Aldermen dream, the Bryant-McCarthy Middle School. I am so proud to have been a part of these projects and the downtown summer seating and lanes. and lanes, as well as Gate City Casino on Northeastern Boulevard.
Thank you. Just a reminder to all candidates, one minute for close. Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Rony, and thanks to Inklink and the library for having us tonight. I was born here, this is my city. I love this place. I love my ward, I've been in my ward over 25 years now. This city is important to me, I love serving it. We are all servant leaders. It's servant leadership, and that's what we do. And I've been in leadership in companies for, you know, 30 years, and I love doing this, I love helping constituents, I love trying to build a better Nashua. We get some problems in front of us, I'm willing to take them on and be challenged with them to try to come to a point where we continue to make Nashua one of the best cities in the country. That was kind of left off the table tonight, but we are one of the best cities. It doesn't always feel like it, but we are. We 100% are, and I want to continue to work for that. So I'm running again for Ward Eight. Thank you, and I hope any Ward Eighters support me here. Thanks.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Well, in my line of work, I'm all about customer service. I sell things to people who need things, and I like aligning them with the, the needs they have with the service and product that we offer. And I see that same dynamic in the role of Ward Aldermen. When I was a Ward Alderman before, one of the best parts about the position was if someone had an issue or a concern or a need, you could, from the position of Ward Aldermen, help align the service that they were in need of, and that would fix things, some of the things that Aldermen at the ward level have to deal with: speed, safety, lighting, sidewalks, property lines, snow removal, trash removal, all those great things. And making city government work for those who pay for it, to me, is the reason I'm in this race. Thank you.
Mr. Thibodeau.
Once again, Chris Thibodeau, current Ward Six Alderman. The job was definitely different than I thought it would be, and what I've gotten out of it was, was really being a good advocate for the constituents. I've had many people that have had issues with projects that the city initiated that, you know, had a ripple effect to, to their property, something like that, or parking on a street that was, which limited access for emergency vehicles is one of the things I, I worked on. So, so being an advocate, and I don't get them all right, but being an advocate for the city of Nashua. I want Nashua, I've only been here since 2009, my wife's born and raised, but I want a robust Nashua that can be strong and resilient.
Ms. Smith?
So right now, eggs cost more than chicken. Eggs should not cost more than chicken. And I share that with you because I want you to remember that I'm about fiscal responsibility and fiscal accountability in the future of Nashua. I'm not going anywhere. And I've got lots of questions. I may not have all the answers, but as a 30-year educator, I know how to read, I know how to write, and I also know how to make sure we challenge ourselves. I've done fundraising at the grassroots level. Somebody told me, "Go out and get $18 million." I just went out and did it. We need to look at how we are spending our funds, we need to look at what funding is available for us to get back from the federal government in the way of grants that we can bring back and cover some of the expenses that we have and need for our city. So, Vengerfulada Smith, your new Ward Six Alderman.
Thank you. This concludes our second candidate's forum. You've listened to a conversation from the following candidates running for Aldermen in Nashua. In Ward Six, Van Gogh's Luda Smith and Chris Thibodeau. In Ward Eight, Dave McLaughlin and Derek Thibodeau. And in Ward Nine, Linda Harriet Gaffrout and John Sullivan. Our thanks to them, and our thanks to you in the audience, and to you at home, and to our team behind the scenes who have made this event possible. You could read up on these candidates by checking out Nashua's Inklink, Voter, Election Voter Guide, online at Nashua.inklink.news. And remember, Election Day is on November 4th, and you can learn more about where you can vote and who's on the ballot by visiting the city's website at Nashua, N-H dot G-O-V. Next week, the Women's League of Voters will moderate a forum for the candidates running for the Board of Education. That conversation will happen right here at the Public Library at 6:30 p.m. Hope you can join, and I'll be back here on October 30th for our final conversation with the candidates running for Aldermen at large. Hope you could join us then. For the Nashua Public Library, Inklink, you want to say, I was on a roll.
I know.
Come on now.
No, I just, Maya, our, our crack reporter, wanted you to, to know that the next forum is October 22nd, not next week, so.
Okay, and it's October 22nd. All right, very well. October 22nd, that is happening at the National Public Library. You know, we could do that in post, but anyway, nonetheless. We'll see you next time here. I'm Rony Camille. Thanks so much for joining us, and until next time, wishing you the best of goodbyes.